Good evening. Welcome to the November 21 Valley View School Board Meeting. I would ask everyone to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Beduris, if you would please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anybody who happens to have their computer up and would like to read the Board affirmation statement, please feel free. Ms. Perel, since you seem to have yours up ready to go.
Our mission is to empower all learners to be college and career-ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as productive citizens.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum, agenda if you would please.
I would like to ask that the Board approve the agenda as presented.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Ayes have it. 4.2, motion to elective Board Vice President. We have a vacancy in the absence of Ms. Hanson who has moved out of the community. And thank you for your dedication and yours on the Board. At this time I will entertain motion to appoint anyone who would be interested in being on the Board. We would be asking for a second, counsel?
Religion.
Correct. So I need a motion and a second.
I make a motion for Dan Felice to be the Vice President.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody else who wishes to be Vice President of the Board?
I nominate Liz Campbell.
We have a motion for Member Liz Campbell to be. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, seeing none, the motion fails. Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Hearing none, seeing none. We have a vote, we have a motion, no, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Here, you could be crystal for the day. Congratulations on being Board Vice President. Vice President acts in the abstention of the President, so on, so on, and so on. So, thank you. Next, Treasurers' Report. Mr. Gazafi, if you would please.
Yes, Treasurers' Action Report 5.1 is prepared for the month of October 2016. Includes the usual summary of reports, financials, balance sheet funds, summary of revenue expenditures, as well as the interim obligations totaling $4,347,706.71 for your action.
Motion to approve the Treasurers' Report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, we're spending money.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, Mr. Gazafi.
Yes, Treasurers' Action Report 5.2, the Schedule of Bills for November 2016. We've got six funds represented, representing the total bills payable of $3,82,465.44 for your action.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, we're spending money.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Here, you could be crystal for the day. Congratulations on being Board Vice President. Vice President acts in abstention of the President, so on, so on, and so on. So, thank you. Next, Treasurers' Report. Mr. Gazafi, if you would please.
Yes, Treasurers' Action Report 5.1 is prepared for the month of October 2016. Includes the usual summary of reports, financials, balance sheet funds, summary of revenue expenditures, as well as the interim obligations totaling $4,347,706.71 for your action.
Motion to approve the Treasurers' Report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Motion, seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, we're spending money.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, Mr. Gazafi.
Yes, Treasurers' Action Report 5.2, the Schedule of Bills for November 2016. We've got six funds represented, representing the total bills payable of $3,82,465.44 for your action.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, we're spending money.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, Mr. Gazafi.
Yes, Treasurers' Action Report 5.2, the Schedule of Bills for November 2016. We've got six funds represented, representing the total bills payable of $3,82,465.44 for your action.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion on the Treasurers' Schedule of Bills to be paid? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote would be in order.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
5.3 through 5.6 are the usual and customary reports, summary of investments for October, property taxes received for October, state funding update through October, as well as all of the school trust account activities for September.
Motion?
So moved.
No, no, there's no motion.
Oh, there's no motion. Just information. Again, I'm trying to get my computer up. What's the, what are we owed by the State of Illinois?
State funding update through October. We've got, owed is $8,355,000. 4.1 million of that would have been owed as of June 30 of 2016. 4.1 million would have been owed as of September 30. So we've got about half of that, 8.3 million, is 120 days old. And 4.1 is a little over 30 days old.
As you know, the State has an enormous funding issue. They solved a short-term problem. Education was included in that, but they just have a cash flow problem to the tune of billions and billions and tens of billions of dollars for various things. General sum of the members are not getting paid currently because of some internal issues there. But they have doubled what they owe us in five months?
Yes.
Basically, four and a half, five months. We are good, I like to think that we're good stewards of the people's money up here. We try to be. And we hope that the State is good stewards of the taxes that we pay, and I know we all do. So hopefully, they will solve their woes in Springfield in the near future. I'd like to have confidence that they will, but some days I wonder. So, please keep us apprised of that. When we start getting into the double digits of millions owed, it becomes problematic. Not that 8 million isn't problematic, but when we get beyond that, you know, the finances are an important issue. So, where are we at? Property taxes, state funding update, da-da-da, schools trust. All schools trust, did we do that?
We did. Karen consent.
Consent agenda items. Dr. Mitchum?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to ask the Board to approve consent agenda items.
6.1 through 6.7, 6.1 Board meeting minutes, October 24, 2016. 6.2 Executive Session Meeting Minutes, October 24, 2016. 6.3 Trips for Bolingbrook High School. 6.4 Resolution Number 1562, approving health insurance plan exemptions, 2017. 6.5 Student Activity Contract Approval Request, Brooks Middle School with SNAP raise. 6.6 Approval of Licensing Agreement with the Village of Romeville to construct additional parking spaces for the new administration center. And 6.7 Approval of Intergovernmental Agreement with the Village of Bolingbrook regarding assigning of crossing guards.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on 6.1 to 6.7? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote would be in order.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Student and staff recognition. Do we have any this evening? Thank you, making sure. Liaisons and reports. Board members from my left.
The Handbook Committee met on the Discipline section of the Handbook about two weeks ago. And what we are doing is fine-tuning everything to make sure that it is congruent throughout the entire district, elementary, junior high, high school, and making sure that everything is up with what the State has to say. So we are working on that right now.
With regards to Wilco Career Center, they are on track with the construction plan. There's been really no hiccups. Every district within Wilco has made the first payment, and they were very appreciative of receiving that bond payment. And I will have a list of October Students of the Month later this week. And I will make sure that I get them to Mr. Randa to post on the website, as well as to Ms. Casey for Board notes.
No report.
No report.
No reports. I already kind of gave my soliloquy on the State of Illinois, so I'll leave that out. Audience participation. Is there anybody who wishes to address the Board this evening? If so, please step forward, state your name, where you're from, and be mindful of time. We do have a four-minute limit, if you would please.
Thank you. Good to see the Board members and senior staff and Board elective officials. My name is Sinatra Strong, I live in Bolingbrook. I have since 1993. I have a couple of questions and concerns. And one is, I did apply for the vacant Board seat. I was notified that I would not be considered or interviewed. So it was quite concerning for me. So I'd like to know, what was the criteria for to be considered, at least for the interview? Anyone?
The Board members were all presenting resumes from all the candidates, and there were numerous of them. We decided to let everyone at the dais review those resumes and choose amongst themselves and prioritize one through five who they thought they would like to see interviewed. That was done. There was a compilation that was sent to the Board Clerk. The compilation was made, and those who received a higher value in points than others were interviewed, and those who did not were not. It's a relatively simple, straightforward thing.
Okay.
So we had 15, we interviewed five.
Okay. So, again, what was the criteria? What, how was these points generated?
Each Board member was asked to prioritize somebody one through five.
What were they looking at?
Your resume.
To prioritize. I just submitted a resume. What was the criteria?
Everyone was offered the opportunity to do for their own diligence what they thought would have qualified or what would make somebody a good Board member.
Okay.
There was no, we didn't say, here's your top, you have to use this. There's no, we didn't have a document that we handed everybody. It was, please review these resumes, select from these people that have submitted, who would you like to see interviewed?
Okay. Well, real quickly, as a, I have been very involved in the Village of Bolingbrook and working with Valley View students through the years, particularly since the year 2000. I have articles from the Bugle with Valley View students. These are a couple of the papers here. So I've been very involved. H2O, the high school dance teams, I have done it all. And also I have received my Master's in School Counseling pending licensing. So there were so many things I felt like I would at least be considered for interviewing. I'm not talking about the seat itself, but to be considered to be interviewed. So I did receive a letter, you know, I do appreciate, I did appreciate receiving the letter, but was quite, I was quite taken back from that letter. And I'm not looking at myself as being a special person, that I should have been considered to be interviewed, but I'm just wondering, with the process and being a taxpayer in this town since 1993, known in the community, very heavy community involvement, and not even be considered for interviewing. Some other Board members know me, but most does not, but they know who they are. So it was quite concerning that I wasn't chosen to at least be interviewed. But I do respect the decision of the Board members that decide to move forward with other candidates. I'm not, you know...
Well, I would say that we, all the candidates that we talked to this evening, one of the Board members actually made the comment, it was, it was a good problem to have. Then we felt like everybody that was in there would bring something to the Board and to the district. So, I mean, again, I thought that was, you know, this was the fairest process that we could come up with, and I felt very good about it. And we've told people, we've encouraged everybody that was there and anybody else that received a letter, if you feel passionate about it, there is an election coming up, and as they say, put your name on the ballot.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a given, but...
I think, just, it's much less about your qualifications versus the qualifications of the people that were selected. It speaks volumes of them as well, because nothing to take away from your qualifications, but the people that were selected for the interview had qualifications that could not be ignored either. So unfortunately, we've got to take 15 and whittle it down to a certain amount, and there's always going to be people that...
Yeah, like I said before, I respect your decision, who you chose, you know, to move forward. Has that person been chosen, or no, is it still pending?
We'll be concluding that after this meeting, see.
Oh, okay.
It's anticipation of doing that.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on up, please state your name, where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Norman Brown. I live here in Bolingbrook. And just to follow up on the question, because I'm a little confused with regards to the interview process and the qualifications, even though I did not apply. Generally, when one applies for a position, there's knowledge, skills, and abilities. And there is a sick criteria that must be met, whether that is educationally, community involvement. I'm not clear what that is at this point. Can you please further explain on that?
Again, every member was afforded the opportunity to prioritize the people that they would like to see. What's important to me may not be important to Ms. Perel. What's important to me may not be as important to Ms. Campbell. They were afforded the opportunity to bring the people that they felt would be a good qualified candidate. There's no particular, I have things I think can make you a good Board member. It may not jive with what everybody else here thinks. So everyone was afforded their own personal opinions on who they thought would be candidates. There was no set criteria on how to do it. We were all presented the same resumes, the same colored letters, and asked each person to present your five, and whoever was those five after retaliated the numbers were the people that we interviewed.
So, what I'm hearing, there was no sick criteria? Each of you had your own respective criterias that you were hoping the candidate?
For the same reasons we all put our name on a ballot and ran for office? Absolutely.
Hmm. That's different.
I think, I think the difference, Mr. Brown, is that these are elected positions. They're not appointed positions. So as when looking for a superintendent, there would be some very specific criteria you might look for.
Exactly.
But given that these are public positions that ultimately will be voted on by the constituents in the community, you know, the criteria really is, is up to each individual voter as to what it is they're looking for. So we tried to mirror that as much as possible in this, in this setting, by allowing the Board members to make a unilateral decision about who they felt based on their background knowledge of who their constituents are, as to what they were looking for. So, you know, Member Sikora may have been brought to the Board as a result of being an ex-educator in the district for 30 years, and she knows that's important to her constituency. So she might have been looking for that criteria in the selection process. Mr. Quigley has been a politician and has been a lobbyist as well, and that role has served him well in supporting our Board down in Springfield. So he might have been looking for that criteria from a particular Board member. So each of the Board members had specific criteria based on their perception of what the, of what the community is looking for, and then chose Board members from that perspective. So it's not, it's apples and oranges to an appointed administrative position or appointed teaching position, et cetera. I do have set criteria for what we're looking for in terms of our administrators, our teachers, and staff. But when it comes to a public position that's being voted on, criteria can be different from all of those Board members. That's why we didn't want to sit down and say one set criteria. And even if we did, I doubt that the Board would be able to come to an agreement with, well, this is the criteria we're looking for, given that each of them came here with a set of criteria that they believe was in the best interest of the community based on the constituents that voted for them.
Okay. I take it a decision, or a candidate has been selected?
We will be going in after this to, for those discussions.
Will it be announced tonight?
We will announce it at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to deviate from the agenda briefly, if we could. We have the new student liaisons from Bolingbrook and Romeville High School. If you guys would like, come up as a group, and please just introduce yourselves to the Board. It's not on the agenda, but I would like to do that if we could at this time. So, from the right and left, why don't you guys? Come on.
President Quigley, could you explain, you know, some of the audience and the TV viewer might not know exactly what we're doing, and when they just come and introduce themselves, if you tell them a little bit about what they're going to be doing.
So, we have asked, a year ago, we asked the high schools to present us with students who they feel like are representative of the school, and will bring ideas from the school to the Board members, and vice versa. If you hear us talking about things that you want to communicate back to your fellow students, you were selected by your, you know, your principals and your teachers and what have you, and the parents that, or not parents, but the pupils, your peers. These are people at your schools who feel that you guys are representative of their, of your buildings. In my opinion, it's a great honor to do this, it's really good for your resume, but it's a good opportunity for you guys to participate, learn something about the process that is contributing to your education. So with that, from the left, I'm not sure who's from which school, so if you guys want to come up and...
The BHS.
Bolingbrook on the left, if you want to come up and introduce yourselves.
I'm going to go Bolingbrook, then we're Romeville.
There you go. So just go, all going up there together, you know? Look up at the camera, you're going to be on TV in a second. So just kind of tell us, you know, about yourselves, and welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to present at the Board of Education meeting tonight. We would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Mitchum. We are also excited to see our friends from Romeville High School here tonight. My name is Sarah Jubbia. I am graduating in 2017, and I am a senior at Bolingbrook High School. I have been involved in several extracurricular activities at Bolingbrook High School. I am on the speech team, and it has taught me not only what speech is, but how I can improve on myself as an individual. I am also in track and field. Our coaches are amazing. I have learned so much about myself, and I have learned within these four years of my experience to push myself to unbelievable limits. In the past, I was also in cross-country and volleyball. My experience at Bolingbrook High School has been amazing, and I am blessed to say I have a story to tell. This year, there has been major improvements within the school. Dr. Pascavage is truly incredible, and he makes our school feel safe, and he holds us accountable.
Did he pay you to say that?
No.
Thank you. While you're taking, just introduce yourselves real quick, if you've got some notes, read them.
Yeah.
Or speak from the heart.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, along with anybody in attendance tonight. I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Antonio Lea. I'm a junior here at Bolingbrook High School.
Speak into the microphone, Antonio, thank you.
Sorry.
You're kind of tall.
I am a junior at Bolingbrook High School. I'm an inducted member of Thespian Troop 3413, the co-captain of the Bolingbrook Speech Team, and the Chairman of the ACYOA Junior Chapter, an international youth organization at my church in Chicago. I would like to thank the Board of Education for entrusting me with this position, along with my US History teacher, Ms. Worthy, for bringing this position to my attention. My plan is to attend Ohio State and pursue a career in education. I am greatly appreciative of this position to represent BHS and be the voice of the student body. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, as well as the community. I would like to first say that it is an honor and privilege to be able to present myself today as a student liaison to the School Board from Bolingbrook High School. My name is Kazim Niaz, and I am a sophomore at Bolingbrook High School. I am the youngest of the three children in my family, all of whom have been involved in the Valley View School leadership for quite some time. My older sister, Samreen, graduated from Humphrey Middle School in 2004, and from BHS in 2008, where she was the first batch of students to go to the newly-built high school right after my family moved to Bolingbrook from Hanover Park. In addition, my older brother, Kashif, graduated from Brooks Middle School in 2010, and from BHS in 2014, and is finishing up his third year at the University of Illinois. Currently, I am involved in the Muslim Student Association and Student Ambassadors in Bolingbrook High School. When it comes to my future, I want to become an attorney. This is one of my life goals that I've been working hard to accomplish. In 2011, I became an Illinois Young Scholar, and was later recognized by the Illinois Principals Association as an outstanding student in 2014. With the support and guidance of my family, I am able to make my dreams come true and become successful in the future.
Thank you. You already got the suit. Talk to the lawyer. You look good. Nice tie. And?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board.
Microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and everybody who is here from the community. Hello, my name is Nicole Walker, and I am a junior at Bolingbrook High School. And in the future, I would love to attend Bradley University, and I would love to major in Communications. I am an active member of the Student Ambassadors, and I am the manager of the JV softball team, as well as a member of our improv troupe at Bolingbrook High School, and an actress in the fall play, and I am also the captain of our speech team. As you can tell, I am very involved in Bolingbrook High School, and it is a big part of my life. From my freshman year until now, I have seen some amazing positive changes in our school, and not only for myself, but a plethora of our student body. And I am also currently planning a Dance Thon for Cancer at our school. And this is very important to me. This comes from deep within my passion in the community, and also because my father has survived cancer just this year. So I felt it'd be an important thing to bring about the community and to support everybody that has been affected by cancer at any time. And I say with great pride that I am a Raider.
Thank you. RHS, come on up. You guys can sit down or go home. You got homework?
Very impressive.
Of course you do.
That's right, listen to them.
Yeah, you got to listen to what they say, though.
Good evening. My name is Olivia De La Rosa, and I'm a senior at Romeville High School. I'm an active leader at RHS, and I'm involved in multiple community service clubs like student government, student council, peer mediation, and HOSA offered at the Wilco Career Ready Center. I'm the President of Student Government, the 2017 Class President, Captain of the Girls' Varsity Soccer Team, and the Secretary of HOSA. My future plans are to attend and continue my academic and athletic career at the University of St. Francis. I plan to receive a major in nursing, and I would like to thank the Board for picking I plan to receive a major in nursing, and I would like to thank the board for picking me to fill the position of the student liaison and allowing me to expand my leadership skills and my abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And next.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Angelica Mullen. I am a junior at Romeo High School. Ever since my freshman year, I have been involved in many clubs at school, such as Interact Club, Leadership, Best Buddies, National Honor Society, and am the current editor of Key Club and the president of our junior class council. In the spring, I also play on the varsity badminton team, and in the summer, I also volunteer at the Provena St. Joseph Hospital. On top of that, I am in all AP and honors classes and am in the top 10% of my class. In the future, I do plan on becoming a nurse practitioner, not quite sure where I want to go yet, but that's the plan. Ultimately, I just want to say thank you for choosing me as one of your school board liaisons and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Last but not least.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Walid El Anani. I'm also a senior at Romeo High School. I am an avid participant in the National Honor Society, in student government, Interact Club, Muslim Student Association, and service is something that we as a school focus very highly of. Our sponsor, Mrs. Simpson, has greatly pushed us to great limits to understand the great opportunity of service and how it can affect our community. And for my future plans, I want to study neurology. It's the secret mysteries of the brain is something that fascinates me. And I think growing up in a cultural background and being part of all these clubs gives me a lot to give to you guys in these type of meetings, so I appreciate the value and opportunity to be a part of this student board liaison, and I hope to extract from it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Also, we have another member who could not be here today due to rescheduling issues. His name is Burleigh Johnson, and he's also one of our peers and a great member to our community and our school, and he hopes to be, he is very excited for this opportunity.
Thank you.
President Quigley.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to first publicly thank Member Campbell for helping coordinate this, and it was an honor to be a part of it, and looking at the seven and a half since one is not here, and that's our fault because we had to reschedule the meeting, but you guys are a true representation and a true epitome of what this liaison position's about, representing all, and I don't think there'll be any corner of either of the schools unturned by the aid of you, so we look forward to your reports and thank you for taking this challenge, because it's a challenge and we want to hear all voices, so, but thank you.
With that in mind, fire away.
Upcoming events that we would like to love to share to support our fellow students are in BHS Tuesday, November 22nd, Boys JV Wrestling is at home at 5:30 PM. There's also an improv show on December 16th, however, the time is to be determined.
Where's that at?
I'm sorry?
The improv thing?
The improv is on December 16th.
Now where?
At Bolingbrook High School.
Oh, at the high school?
Bolingbrook High School. We also have a girls' bowling tournament on Saturday, November 26th, at 9:00 AM. If you would like any additional information on these events or others, please go to the Bolingbrook 8 to 18 website. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to try and get together with all of you and have lunch with you and your principals at some point during the year, either individually or collectively, just as time allows. I know you guys have probably different lunches and scheduling, but we'll see if we can work something like that out. I think it's fantastic what you guys are offering to do, and I would like to echo what Dan said, and Liz, thank you for bringing this as an idea a year ago and the fruits of the labor, and you guys are it, so thank you and have a great Thanksgiving. Now go home and study. Uh, let's see, where do we leave off at? Action Reports, Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to approve Student Due Process Case A as presented.
Motion?
So move.
We have a motion, we have two motions. A motion and a second, second and a motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sukora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley.
Yes.
Ms. Kinder's not here this evening, so I'm assuming she has no report. Gary? No?
Yes, I've got three this evening. First, beginning employee insurance benefit renewals. We received our results from Mezaro Insurance Services regarding our third-party administration for health, vision, dental, and stop-loss coverage. Happy to report that our fixed cost for health administration is decreasing by 8.8%, representing about a $63,000 savings, and so that's the good news. Dental, there's no change, as there has been since 2012, we're paying the same, I think it's $2.68 per member to administer the dental plan. On vision, we did receive a competitive quote from IMED, which means we'll be changing our network. All the benefits will be the same, and they provided us a flat or no increase quotation for a 48-month period. And so, looking at their network, they actually offer more, larger retail locations as compared to VSP, America's Best, Four Eyes, JC Penney's, Lenscrafters, Meyer, Pearl Vision, Sears, Target, all of those will be available under IMED. They were not under VSP. Lastly, stop-loss coverage, which is the coverage we purchased to protect ourselves from large self-insured medical losses on individuals. We had three cases above the $270,000 threshold, and so they did come back with a pretty large increase. Mezaro did go out to market for, received quotes from 10 carriers, three of which were deemed competitive, and Sun Life, our incumbent provider, quoted the least amount of increase at 15%, which is about a $93,000 increase. And so overall, if you take all of our, all of those fixed costs, our increase for fixed costs will be about 2.2% over the expiring year. So we are recommending the renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield as our third-party administrator for our health and dental plans, beginning January 1st. Also recommending renewing our stop-loss, specific stop-loss coverage with Sun Life, also beginning January 1st, and entering into a four-year fixed contract with IMED for our vision service insurance.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, seconded. We have two motions and one second. Does there any discussion, any questions, Gary, on this?
It's a big expense, and I think Mezaro's done a yeoman's job of managing that and helping us manage that over the years, and I know Gary and HR and everybody does a yeoman's job of making sure that the changes are conveyed to the employees, and I thank you for that.
That being said, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further questions or discussion, a roll call vote would be in order.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sukora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
In accordance with the Truth in Taxation Act, the district must officially determine and adopt a tentative tax levy at least 20 days prior to the final adoption of its formal levy. If the increase of the 2016 levy is in excess of 105% of the previous year's aggregate extension, with the exception of debt service, a public hearing must be held on said levy. The tax cap limitation will limit property tax increases for existing property owners to the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, or 5%, whichever is less. In the case of the 2016 levy request, that increase will be capped at 0.7% exclusive of existing debt service. The tentative levy I'm asking you to approve this evening is not in excess of the 105%. Therefore, we are not required to publish a notice of the tax levy. The takeaways for the '26 tax levy are as follows. Our operating levy, which includes all funds except debt service, is being requested to be set at $143,79,000, which is a 1.45% increase over last year's request. The debt service tax extension will increase by 2.4 million, or 29.9 million, or 8.8%. Total levy request for 2016, adding those to 173,012,000. We will not receive that much new revenue, but requesting more due to our EAV, or Equally Success Value, and new property being unknown at this time. We won't know those final figures until sometime late March of 2017. Our best guess as to what we will actually receive due to being limited to that CPI of 0.7 is 139,39,000, or 2.75 million in new operating revenue, which equates to a 1.12% increase in our operating revenue. Overall expected levy increase, including new property and debt service, is about 3.16% or $5.17 million over last year's actual extension. So at this time, I ask, I am requesting approval of Resolution 1563 to set the estimated 2016 tax levy as provided in your packet.
So move.
A motion?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Gary, thanks for the report. Motion to approve would be in order, or not a motion, a roll call vote would be in order.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sukora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Lastly, I'm asking for a approval on a consulting services agreement extension with Jar Consulting of Springfield. This is the same contract we've entered into for the past six years, with what I will refer to as the big three issues facing all school districts throughout the state, those being funding reform, property tax freeze, and pension pushback. Having a consultant down in Springfield representing our interests is as important now as it's ever been, and so-
I thought you were going to say funding reform, funding reform, and funding reform.
Any one of those would be enchanting. So happy to report there's no increase in the agreement. It's the same as it has been at $3,000 per month, and so I am requesting approval of said agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote would be in order.
Just one count, I would like to make sure that we thank them for maintaining that same cost, it's appreciated, and thank them for their efforts, because I know there are voices down there and we really appreciate that.
So noted. Motion seconded and roll call vote.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sukora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Ms. Hawks?
Due to the rescheduling of the meeting, Ms. Hawks had a pre-planned vacation, so I have-
Mr. Hawks.
We'll be covering her information tonight, beginning with the consolidated action report. On the report, we've got 15 separate actions representing certified personnel, 35 actions representing classified personnel, and one each for both classified and certified administrative personnel for your consideration.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sukora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Also recommending at this time that the board consider for approval and adoption the resolution authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel, employee for reasons other than reduction in force.
Motion? Oops, sorry.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sukora?
Yes.
Vice President Felice?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Who's doing the professional services proposal, Gary or Jim?
That's me.
Gary?
At this time, we're just presenting for information a professional service proposal from White Construction Services for the renovation of the current ad center into 12 additional classrooms and ancillary space. This is a proposal that we've used in the past, providing construction management services similar to the full-day kindergarten project that we undertook several years ago. White will be a single point of responsibility for all construction activities. Each trade will be competitively bid. To maximize cost savings, subcontractors will be selected based on the lowest qualified bids received and a thorough understanding of the scope of the work. Our target timeline is to have all spaces ready for the beginning of the 2017, 2018 school year, with target for, with a target date for occupancy of the new ad center beginning February 1st to the 15th. That leaves us approximately six months to get this space converted to the expansion of the early childhood center. And so there's some information in the packet. I'd like to bring this back for formal approval at the December 12th board meeting.
And I just want to confirm that the construction management fee for compensation is really 160,596, not the-
172,000, 160.
Right.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Dan. What happened was we had continued to fine-tune this to bring the cost down, and they left the verbiage in there, but not the dollar figure. We're hopeful that can keep looking at this and bring, hopefully, what my hope would be, even a further reduced contract cost.
So this is just the natural progression of us moving towards having more children in this building and providing early childhood care in this building, and relocating the administrative personnel to a vacant, currently vacant building just down the road, and we have to do the build-out. That's pretty much it, so, thanks for your diligence on that, Gary. That's information only, correct? Anybody else have any comments?
So the written part is incorrect, but the numerical part is correct. Thank you.
And this isn't final, final, we'll take action.
No, just- We vote on it next meeting.
Correct.
Yes, I understand that. And he was going to get a check changed for next meeting on the final draft.
Okay. Next, special education extended school year.
Yes, Information Item 14.2, Extended School Year ESY is provided for a limited portion of the special education population. To be eligible, students must exhibit considerable regression of learning skills and inability to recoup the loss in a reasonable period of time as determined by their individual education plan or IEP. ESY programming costs are covered by Medicaid and local funds. Additional details are provided in the report. This will be brought for your approval at the December board meeting.
Next, job description, Mr. Hawks.
Yes, we've got two for your information this evening, those being that of the tech, theater tech coordinator. That's a new position that currently is staffed with a part-time hourly individual. We'd like to provide additional responsibilities for this position, including scheduling the auditoriums, providing more consistent training to those students and faculty in those areas to make sure they are run appropriately, better assistance in production design for various events, creation of operation and safety manuals, further production support for the middle schools, as well as just general maintenance, cleaning, inspection, and schedules for all of the equipment that we've invested so heavily in our auditoriums, as well as an inventory of all of that equipment throughout the district. Second is an administrative computing specialist. This replaces the programmer-application specialist, it's a job revision, just to stay more current with what the technology department is looking for in that respective position. So this is just an information reading for you. We'll bring these back formally at the December 12th meeting.
Real briefly, on the sound system theater stuff, Gary, you brushed over it, but we have invested heavily in those equipments, and particularly the new stuff at Romeo High School and all the stuff at Bolingbrook High School, and at the grade schools as well. Having untrained hands, everybody wants to touch the knobs and play with the dials and everything and turn the sound and lights on and stuff. This is highly technical and expensive equipment, so having somebody who is trained properly to train other people how to use that is really important. I have a friend who's in that industry and I know what the changes are in the industry and how those things go about, and it's, I think it's a good idea that we probably, something we maybe should have done earlier, but now that we've seen the light of day, I think this is the right thing to do, so, thanks for bringing that forward.
Yeah.
Passing along to whoever's idea it was, because I think it's a good one, so, thanks for that. Board policy, student transfers from non-districts.
Yes, Information Item 14.4, First Reading Board Policy is 7.50, School Admission and Student Transfers to and from non-district schools. This policy is being presented for first reading in order to align with the Valley View School District Handbook and state guidelines.
Anybody have any questions on that while we're here? All right, let's move on down the agenda. Legal services report.
No formal report.
Thank you. AFT report.
Oh, sorry. No.
Sorry.
Safety first.
Sorry. I just have a short announcement. Good evening, Board of Education, Senior Leadership. Congratulations, Mr. Felice, on vice president. I know how it feels to be a vice president, so. As we move into the holiday season, we are faced with many of our students who are in crisis, and I know firsthand, being at Humphrey for 17 years as a history teacher, I have been the sponsor of Humphrey Helping Hands, Mrs. Sukora probably knows it well, assisting families around the holidays who otherwise would not have a good holiday season by providing gift cards, toys, books, dinners, and things like that. Our last council meeting, we brought in Mike Hennessy from United Way, and he gave us a spreadsheet of how the funding has been going from Valley View, and it's been kind of taking a dive. So I encouraged my reps to go out into our 21 buildings to get into the members and, you know, whether it's a dollar, $5, increase a donation they've already made, like I have, or to volunteer to make a donation. So I would love to partner with the board in any way possible to help United Way. I know many of the Catholic charities and many of the services that United Way provides for Will County, and it's just a phenomenal, phenomenal organization. So in any way I could support or help push the message out, I know that we're working with Ms. Shanitra Brooks, and we have Monica Engel, who is now our public relations representative along with Michelle Salato, and they're kind of also getting out into the community. So anything that we can do this holiday season, because many of our students and families use those services, so I would really love to be part of that, so if we can-
Can you send something out to the board members so that if we want to donate, we can? Is there something they can send to us?
Absolutely. I know, I can talk with Monica, and I know, like I said, she's working directly with Ms. Shanitra Brooks, and it's just a wonderful organization, and, you know, we've seen the trend from 2012 go down, and so I'm also going to be encouraging our members to, you know, like I said, I spend $5 at Starbucks every morning for a grande frappuccino, so that is, that's a meal for a child, that's a coat, that's a toy, that's a book. So any way possible, I would love to facilitate that discussion and any help that we can get as well.
As we discussed, I was on the local government committee for United Way for many years, and I've said it here before, and we've had Mr. Hennessy here before as well. I got my United t-shirt, but I don't have it on tonight, but I will wear it, hopefully I remember and wear it to the next meeting. I remember to wear it to the next meeting. A couple bucks from every employee per paycheck out of a district this size is an enormous amount of money to the United Way. They have countless numbers of places. If you don't want to just give generally to the United Way, there are check-offs on the sheet that you sign up for. So you can say, I want all my money to go to this particular charity, or you can give the general donation. But when you have 2,300 employees, and if they all throw in a couple, three, four, five, 10 bucks, whatever it is, a paycheck, and trust me, you don't miss the five bucks. And we do it through my work, and my company has matching as well. But if you do that, it makes an enormous amount of difference to the United Way. And on top of that, one in three families in Will County uses a service provided by the United Way. You may not know it, but they're supporting something. It might be a park district program, a before-and-after school program. There's all kinds of things. It's not just what some people's perception of the United Way is. You have Catholic charities, you have mission services, you have battered women's services, domestic violence services. There's all kinds of different programs that the United Way supports, and they are there for a lot of reasons, and they're all good. So I will, whatever, you know, I'll do whatever I can to help promote it.
Exactly.
I ain't doing a dunk tank in December, but I'll do whatever in December.
I think United Way is also, and I forget the exact percentage, you might know it off the top of your head, they are one of the top companies as far as their overhead costs are very low.
Correct.
And so the money they collect, is it like 96% or 98% or...
I'm actually not sure, but what really surprised me, though, was when Mike brought in a spreadsheet of how many families go to the services that United Way provides. And especially, you know, when our children are in crisis, you know, we see it firsthand in our classrooms as teachers, whether they come to school hungry or there's domestic violence in the home, and those children are suffering. And so it makes our job not harder, just a little bit more challenging. So, you know, like I said, I actually personally was a benefit of United Way as, my mom was a single mom, and we benefited from Catholic charities. And so now I'm in a position to give back, and using my leadership role, if I can, I would really like to push this campaign forward and go from the deficit into something in the positive. So I'd like to continue those conversations, and like I said, we're moving it into the buildings right now, and it just takes a little donation. So thank you for your support.
You bet.
And I'd just like to say, please give everybody, keep mentioning. I tell everybody, my real job is Catholic charity, so I do...
It's a wonderful organization.
Yes, I believe so.
Wonderful. Got my mom through, so, and happy Thanksgiving.
And you don't have to be Catholic to get there.
No, you don't have to be Catholic.
No, you don't. But we serve a lot of people. That's my, that's my day-to-day job, so I'm happy about it.
Well, thank you for listening.
You bet. Thank you.
Good Thanksgiving.
Have a great Thanksgiving. Valley View Council?
No report.
Valley View Office Council report. Thank you. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Any announcements by the board from my right?
Okay. I would just like to say tomorrow, the nondenominational Thanksgiving service will be held at the Sanctuary in Romeo Ville tomorrow night at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. From my left?
The academic curriculum committee that was supposed to meet in November will be meeting at the board meeting at 4:30 in December, so that if people have concerns, they need to contact, email, whatever, Ms. Peril, Mrs. Peril or myself.
Either one?
I just would like to wish everybody a very happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday, and to the students out there and the teachers. Enjoy those small few days off. They're far and few between, so happy Thanksgiving.
I just want to make everyone remind you that all of the schools have holiday concerts coming up, and that's a really, really, really nice way to get in the holiday spirit. Go and listen to some little kids share their love and singing, and it's quite fun. So remember to go support those children.
And they're amazingly talented, if you've gone to one of the shows. I always, this time of year, you know, we all do okay, but be mindful of those who can't be home with family, those who are in the military, soldiers fighting far away, who would love to be home with their families, soldiers and sailors and so on and so forth. I gotta mention my friends in the Coast Guard, but also those who are less fortunate thus. And as Claudine said, reach out, support local food pantries. This is the time of the year when they get hit the hardest. Coat the kids. There's Toys for Tots. There's all kinds of things. Drop something in the bin. If you can't drop something in the bin, drop some money in the mail, drop a check, drop a gift card. It is amazing the amount of support that the Valley View School community and the bigger picture, the Will County community provides. But I can tell you from the people that you know that run those businesses and that are in those businesses, it's never enough. They've lost funding from state dollars and so on and so forth. So every little thing that they can gain in the local community is very, very important to their bottom line and the services that they want to provide. And there's a lot of people who run those organizations who work very dedicated, and they don't make a lot of money, but they work very hard because they believe in what they're doing. And it's really important that those of us who have a little extra go out and support them in whatever way you feel comfortable doing. But Claudine, again, thank you for bringing that up with the United Way. I've always felt passionate about the United Way, and it's a great thing. I'll give you my quick little story. Camp Cattacani in Bolingbrook is a day camp for the summer. I had no earthly idea it was supported by United Way. I had my kids there. You know why they're supported by United Way? Because some parents can't afford to put their kid there, but they don't turn kids away. So there's, you're helping somebody else when you help them through United Way. They're not making personal requests. They're going through the United Way to say, hey, we had, 25% of our kids came here last year were challenged, you know, financially or economically or whatever, and they provide that funding. So it's very important stuff. So again, thank you. Any announcements by the administration?
Happy Thanksgiving to VVSD.
Any announcements by the public? A motion to adjourn into executive session would be in order, and we will not be returning to general session, so have a good evening. Motion? We need a second.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you. Have a great and safe holiday.